Reminds me of a lobby in doctor's office.
I feel like I shouldn't engage the countdown at this point, so it's... All right, right on the money. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's meeting for November 13th. Ms. Fetters, please call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Ambregi?
Present.
Mr. Daniel?
Here.
Mr. Cash?
Here.
Mr. Parsons?
Here.
Ms. Griffith?
Here.
Mr. Mantel?
Here.
All right, thank you. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Flag, the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next on our agenda tonight is our meeting minutes from October 9th. Any revisions, changes to the minutes? Any changes? Ready to call a motion? Okay, do we have a motion to accept the minutes for October 9th?
No move.
Okay, and a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Ambregi?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Cash? Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Mantel?
I'll abstain for the same reasons.
Thank you very much. This brings us now to our first case tonight. This is the final development plan for Grand Communities. Before we get started, have Mrs. Fetters sworn in? Ms. Fetters, I'll let you take the case from here.
All right, so the request is by applicant Grand Communities LLC for an approval of a final development plan to construct 52 single-family homes on a total of 45.262 acres. These sections are a part of a previously approved preliminary development plan of the Renaissance subdivision. The subject property is currently zoned R3 median-density residential district. Per the Middletown Development Code, the purpose of the R3 median-density residential district is to provide for moderate-density, single-family residential uses in an urban setting, which are served completely by public infrastructure adequate for the applicable density of development. The Renaissance I proposes a total of 283 single-family lots, with 52 of those being in phases 12, 13, and 14 of the final development plan of the planned development. In total, between Renaissance I and II, there are 545 single-family homes, with the most recent amendment for the Renaissance I preliminary development plan being approved by Planning Commission in June of 2015. The preliminary development plans for Renaissance subdivision were approved for changes in street alignments, reduction of lot sizes and widths, and increases in open spaces. The final development plan for Renaissance I, phases 12, 13, and 14, does contain the same number of building lots, as well as planned open space, as originally approved in the preliminary development plans. This section will feature Fisher's Masterpiece Home Collection for all phases. And there is only slight discrepancies in the total square footage for lot sizes, but their, like I said earlier, proposed lots remains the same. As for homeowners association, Renaissance I and II are under the same homeowners association and will share certain amenities. Fitness trails at the shared open spaces will also link the two subdivisions. So, as I was looking into this, there are some slight changes in total lots, total lot square footages in various lots. Some are smaller, some are larger. After discussing with the city engineer, the shrinking of some lots and enlarging of other lots will not impact the city engineer's review and approval of the final development plan. But the final development plan will require city council approval. And I did reach out to the applicant, as well as why there are some significant changes in some lot sizes. And the response is included during the preliminary development plan process, a condition stated on the approved project is that during the final development plan and construction plan preparation, the lot lines shown herein may be adjusted slightly. The resultant deviation in total amount of open space from any such minor adjustments may not exceed more than four acres. According to the project's engineer, the deviation is resulting in 3.71 acres. So, less than what they can hit. And here you can see the different phases with their designated architectural styles. Here is your review criteria for a final development plan. And then lastly, based on the staff report provided, the staff recommends approval of the final development plan for Renaissance I subdivision phases 12, 13, and 14 for a total of 52 single-family homes on a total of 45.262 acres. And that will conclude my staff report.
Any questions for Ms. Fetters before we open the public hearing? Okay. Well, now we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the final development plan, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the final development plan, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll now close the public hearing. Well, we have staff recommendation. Any deliberation? Any comments from the board? Looks like overall, it's pretty consistent with the overall preliminary plan and...
I have one comment.
Yes, sir.
On the lot sizes and/or shapes, are you not receiving requests now from residents where the code says you gotta have 20 feet from this or 40 feet from that? And because there's an irregular lot, they have to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals?
Yes, there have been two this year that I believe.
I'm guessing that with what I just heard, this is something the staff needs to look at and maybe make an adjustment in the code.
So, anything amending to a development plan has to be initiated by the applicant. So, I can most certainly reach out to Fisher or whoever. Well, it's essentially Fisher. But that would have to be initiated by the developer themselves.
Okay.
If there's no other comments, do we have a motion for approval? Someone like to make a motion for approval?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Ambregi?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Cash? Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Mantel?
Yes.
This brings us now to case number two. Number five on our agenda is conditional use by Keith Parsons on behalf of Adam Dwyer Funeral Trade. Ms. Fetters, I'll let you take the case from here.
Yes, so this is for a conditional use approval to allow for sales and financing of used motor vehicles at 2531 North Faraday Parkway. Parcel is identified, since there is a small one in the back behind this building. The property is zoned B2 Community Business District, where lots smaller than four acres in size and lot frontage smaller than 200 feet to be used as automotive sales and leasing are considered a conditional use that requires review and approval by City Planning Commission. The property is currently a private vehicle storage for Adam Dwyer Funeral Trade that offers embalming services, transport services, crematory services, and funeral escort services for funeral homes in the region. The property has a total of 0.427 acres, with a lot frontage of approximately 140 feet. So, the purpose of the B2 Community Business District is to provide for areas of the city that will contain a wide variety of commercial and office uses to meet the needs of the city and region that require access to major arterial streets and are in close proximity to major residential neighborhoods. So, the applicant proposes automotive sales and leasing, which is defined in the Middletown Development Code as "any building or land used for the display, sale, or rental of new or used motor vehicle in operable condition." This use type is intended to be for the sale and lease of typical passenger vehicles, including, but not limited to, cars, passenger trucks, and motorcycles. Per the Middletown Development Code, automotive sales and leasing are permitted with standards in the B2 district. And then you can see below, those are the standards and the first permitted with standards are the use-specific standards, excuse me, is that when it is smaller than four acres in size and a minimum lot frontage of 200 feet, it will then be considered a conditional use. Per the Middletown Development Code, Chapter 1226, Review Authorities and Procedures, notice requirements. Published notice was given 10 days before Planning Commission public hearing, and written notice was provided to the applicant, as well as all property owners contiguous and directly across the street or public right-of-way of the subject property. No comments have been received at this time. And in the Middletown Master Plan, the land use map indicates the property in question is located in a base land use category of mixed residential, which is defined as primarily a mix of residential housing types and styles. It supports a range of housing styles and price points that cater to a variety of lifestyles and preferences, with a focus on promoting the development of new detached, single-family homes. Secondary uses include parks, recreational uses, and neighborhood churches and schools. The property also has a study area overlay, which is a land use category in the plan that designates the area as an area that the city needs a more in-depth study and analysis of. Here is your review criteria for a conditional use approval. Here is your additional criteria. Here is the time limit and appeals associated with a conditional use application. Here is the conditional use application. Here are photos of the property. Here is the principally permitted uses table. And staff recommends a decision on this application to be based on the future land use map of the comprehensive plan, although it is vague. And that will conclude my staff report.
Any questions for Ms. Fetters before we open the public hearing? Any questions? We'll now open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward. Mr. Cash, will you swear you're in?
Thank you, sir. My name's Keith Parsons, 125 East Second Street, Franklin, Ohio. 45005. I'm the operations manager for Adam Dwyer Funeral Trades. So, in doing this midtown motorplex, is what we kind of call that, it is used auto sales, but it also benefits our business that we have here in Middletown. We run, we've got a couple of late-model hurses that we run out to funeral homes. We've got a late-model Lincoln XK limousine that we rent to funeral homes in the area. We deal with just about every funeral home in this city on different levels. So, in that, we need to get rid of vehicles that we also don't need any longer, that we buy new to replace whatever we do. And in that, we also want to help the community. We came into the community over on University. We put tens of thousands of dollars into that property to renovate it and make it look nicer in the community. And we plan to do that on this facility as well. We've already started renovations on the inside. We've cleaned up the garage areas in the back from what they were. We've cleaned out the trenches that were there from years and years of just muck and stuff. So, we actively try to make the community better that we come into, and we want to do that here. But we do need to have the dealer's license. And in getting the dealer's license, we need the approval of the city for the zoning. Hence why I'm here. So, I don't know if we're, last time I got three votes. I need four. So, I'm kind of begging on the mercy of the Planning Commission tonight to see if I could just get that fourth vote.
Now, I remember us talking about this last time. Now, one thing that stood out, just curiosity here. You mentioned a hearse and some other things. Now, well, the way that it was explained last time, I believe, was that you were just gonna have car sales there. Are you selling commercial vehicles?
We are not. It's not commercial-based. And those aren't being sold to the public out of that facility. Those are, like, we just sold one out to Phoenix, Arizona. Those are kind of just a pass-through for us. But we have to, we can only sell so many as personal in the state of Ohio. We need to have that dealer's license. So, those aren't going to be listed there for sale for the community or for whatever that would be. That's more just an added bonus for us to be able to move those vehicles through the... Through the, like, we've got a 17 and an 18 Cadillac hearse now. Well, they're gonna get older, and the funeral homes aren't gonna want to use those. So, we need to have an ability to move those out into other communities as well, so they can use them some of the funeral homes that don't have as much money. They need a few-year older. So, we would be able to pass those out like that. But for the community, we're gonna be offering lower-dollar cars, but we're not a buy here, pay here. So, we will either do conventional financing or part of our model is going out and finding what people want, rather than having them sit on a lot for six months or a year, actually going out and getting them what they want and delivering them as soon as they come through the facility.
I think the concern is, just to clarify from the last hearing, you know, originally I voted for you.
Yes, sir.
And I voted because I believed that it was car sales.
Yes, sir.
Adaptable with car sales. I just can't, I just trying to envision a number of hurses lined up, you know, as people go to get food or something else. I just want to make sure that's not where we're heading.
No, sir. And the only reason I even brought that up was because last time it wasn't on the screen as to the company. So, I wanted to just kind of clear up some confusion as to why would a funeral trade be kind of in the automotive business as well? So, yeah, there's not gonna be a line of hurses out there to sell. That's, yeah.
I just wanted to clarify.
No, sir. No, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
With the business you will be doing, will be for the funeral home business?
The midtown motorplex will be to the public. Our funeral home business is over on University.
The public being anybody. I could walk in and buy one?
Buy a car? Absolutely.
From you?
Not a coach. Those aren't to the public. A hearse. Those go to funeral homes and other things. But you would be able to come in and buy a vehicle. Yes, sir.
And what kind of vehicles would you offer to the public?
After the last meeting, we went out and bought a few. We had, we've got an Escape. We've got a Hyundai Elantra. I've got a Cadillac XTS over there right now and a couple of Ford pickup trucks. So, just your standard automotive sales. Nothing specialty there. Again, the only reason I brought that up was because it was on the screen. I just wanted to kind of alleviate and explain why that kind of overlapped there, so.
And if I could just clarify, so this is sort of like a tandem effort where you're simultaneously offering cars to the public, but also, like, recycling hurses through...
Yeah, it doesn't happen that often. There again, that's why I just wanted to verify that it was on the screen. Yeah, it would just, it just allows us to do that in addition. But that's not something, we're not moving 15 hurses through a year. You know, it might be one or two. So, we're not in that type of a business. There's businesses that deal with that exclusively, so.
I understand.
I think that'd be the only sticking point for me.
Yeah, yes, sir. I understand. And I can assure you, that's not the way the business is.
There is probably some space if you had, I know you talked about the dealer's license. I mean, if you're trying to utilize the space, you know, I understand that you're trying to take advantage of the space. So long as it's not in front of full view or something else, that would...
No, sir. And that was also one of the stipulations on our other buildings, that the vehicles from our trade can't be setting out in the lot. So, those are all stored in a closed facility in Franklin.
Okay. So, in this case, we're looking at auto sales primarily?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Parsons? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the proposed variance, please come forward. Anyone else? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We have staff recommendation, looking at the comprehensive plan. And you want to bring the map back up? If there's any questions about this particular plan? Any questions for Ms. Fetters?
It is. Yeah. So, it falls in a unique base land use category as mixed residential, which includes that Faraday corridor. But the study area itself is really over the corridor and like one block out each way.
You'll have to, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, there's a lot of car lots, used car lots predominantly along that area. To be determined in a future planning process.
When we look at additional conditions, and I'm trying to remember, it seems that we, the only condition here that I'm thinking about is at the conclusion, let's say that Mr. Parsons goes out of business or just decides that this location just isn't optimal. This conditional use at that point would end. Is that correct? So, we don't have, do we need to place any conditions on that to say that if this business, is there anything we need to place there? I know in previous times, if we made, I think it was mostly a use variance. We're doing conditional use here, so it is different, but...
No, it wouldn't just end by operation of law. If he were to transfer the property and move off of the property and it transferred out of his ownership, that would be one thing. But just ceasing the business for a period of time would not cancel the use.
Okay. That's what I was wondering, if, you know, if you were a study area and we're looking at this, if we were trying to place at least some minor condition there, allow Mr. Parsons to do what he needs to do, but if this location is not optimal for him, then we would, or future boards would be able to review this and not be maybe stuck with the conditional use being on this lot. If someone else wanted to come back and do another car lot, maybe the city doesn't want to do that any longer. Am I heading in the right direction here, counsel, or? Okay.
I was just, I'm sorry, I was just looking at that. The conditions are up on the board there. If, shall be deemed to authorize only one particular conditional use, and it shall automatically expire.
I was gonna say, go ahead and have a seat for us, yeah. You guys be waiting on me?
That's okay.
And number one, only one particular conditional use and said permit shall automatically expire if, for any reason, the conditional use shall cease for more than one year. So, I think that goes into that. If we cease doing business, we don't sell properties. We're not in the property sales business. We will use the property there regardless. We need this, but we're not going anywhere. We love this community. So, even if the conditional use was to cease for that year, you guys would not be beholden to that conditional permit.
Hey there, Twitter.
Yes, sir.
Or go to, I guess it's from page 18, where we have 19 automotive sales and leasing in parentheses. There. I want to make sure that you understand 19. I don't know what your conversations have been. See the 19 on there, automotive leasing, so there's what's expected of you.
In which part?
So, following, so following this 19 right here are all your use-specific standards. So, you're held to those standards if you're going to use that property.
Correct, absolutely.
And those will be included if approved on a zoning permit?
I want to make sure he knows it. Because you're gonna enforce it. Right?
Ah, somebody from the city will.
Is there a specific part there? Okay, okay, okay.
I just want to make sure that you know.
Oh, absolutely.
Expectation of the city is, so you don't have a problem.
Yes, sir. And we want to follow the letter of the law as well. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I would ask only if we would cite review criteria for the record if we have a motion for approval, if we would cite review criteria. Mr. Cash, you want to take a shot at that?
Yeah, I would move that the the conditional use application be approved. And as I look through the review criteria, number two, that the use is consistent with the spirit of purpose and the intent of the master plan and general purposes of this code. Adding to that, the fact that this isn't a study area, which is obviously in the city's mind is in some kind of a flux as far as how to finalize zoning there. So, that criteria...
May I say six as well seems very applicable, seeing as we've mentioned multiple times that there are similar businesses in the vicinity?
I would include that in my motion, criteria number six.
Very good. So, we have a motion, and do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Ambregi?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
No.
Mr. Cash? Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Mantel?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay. All right, moving along, this now brings us to old-new business. We'll start with the map amendment zone change. This is a Lincoln School property. So, Ms. Fetters, I'll let you take the case from here.
A request by applicant Rovolo Properties LLC for an approval of a preliminary development plan for the town's... plan for the towns of Lincoln Village, known as those parcels noted on the screen, to construct 59 townhome units with a public street, water, sanitary, and storm sewers, as well as two pocket parks. The properties are a total of approximately 5.7 acres. The property will need approval by city council for the planned development, map amendment, and zone change. For property background, the subject property is currently zoned R4 attached residential per the Middletown Development Code. The purpose of the R4 attached residential district is to provide for moderate to high-density residential development, generally located in the core area of the city, and that reflects the historic urban development pattern in and around downtown Middletown. The property was the former home to the former Lincoln Elementary School, built in 1927. The school was in operation until 1980, when students were moved to Roosevelt Elementary School. Following the closure of the school, several small businesses have operated out of the building until the formal closure and demolition in 2021. Following the demolition, the property has remained a vacant lot. Per the Middletown Comprehensive Plan, the property is located in the Central Avenue Corridor Special Interest Area. The vision for the Central Avenue Corridor is a flourishing neighborhood scale, commercial corridor district that is walkable and is a destination location for the city. This corridor is envisioned to continue movement from the downtown that serves and receives support from the surrounding neighborhoods. The corridor has large-scale redevelopment opportunities through reimagining the old Roosevelt School site and former Lincoln School into a premier mixed residential development. The applicant is proposing a development that is comprised of three-unit and four-unit front-loaded townhomes that will be served by a north and south, or a public street that runs north to south, connecting Central Avenue to Howard Avenue. Based on the conceptual drawing submitted, the townhomes are proposed to have a 20-foot front yard setback, a 30-foot rear yard setback, a 6-foot side yard setback to the property lines, and a 6-foot side yard setback, equating to a total of 12 feet between the townhomes. The proposed development will result in 10.32 dwelling units per acre in density. Per the City of Middletown's Development Code, zoning rate, district, excuse me, district regulations, the purpose of the planned development district is to provide for an opportunity for creative and flexible land development, where a base zoning district will not accommodate the proposed development, but where such development will further the purpose of this code and the goals and policies of the master plan. The planned development district is designed to allow for deviations from certain zoning standards that will otherwise apply, if not contrary, to the general spirit and intent of this code. As stated earlier, this project will need approval by city council for the map amendment and zone change. Here's the proposed conceptual plan. And some things you cannot see on there, there are a total of 14 off-street parking spots right about a third of the way down. Nine on one side, four on, well, nine on the west side, four on the, five on the, yeah, sorry, five on the east side. And there is a, the, the street width at its skinniest part is 24 feet wide. Per Chapter 120410 Site Development Standards, there shall not be more than one principal building on an individual lot, except as approved as part of a planned development or as part of an approved condominium project. In such cases, the entire group as a unit shall be subject to the minimum setbacks for the applicable zoning district and lot type. Each individual building shall meet all yard requirements for the appropriate district as though it were an individual lot. And there is a typo in your packet, there are still the architectural requirements in the waivers, but those are no longer applicable as the recent text amendment has went to effect, which is included up here. This is the most recent text amendment, as reflected up here. Buildings in the I-1 and I-2 districts and those in an approved development plan shall be exempt from this chapter. As for off-street parking, per Chapter 121804, three family dwellings require two spaces per unit, and 1.5 spaces are required for multifamily dwellings. Per Chapter 121602 applicability, all development and planned development shall be subject to the standards of this chapter unless otherwise modified through the planned development review and approval process. Also, Part F, when a development is subject to the provisions of this section, a landscaping plan shall be submitted with a certificate of zoning compliance application. Also, Part II trees, a minimum of three trees shall be provided in each front yard area, up to two of which may be planted between the sidewalk and street curb. Each tree shall be a minimum of one and one and a half inch caliper diameter breast height. The applicant is requesting that the landscaping, the site landscaping for single, two, three, and four family dwellings is waived. Per Chapter 122203 General Design Standards, Part B, street lighting, street lighting shall be provided in accordance with the manual design for public improvements. Also, Part E, preservation of natural features, natural features shall be preserved to the maximum extent feasible in accordance with the City of Middletown's Manual of Design for Public Improvements for Streets. Chapter 122205, Part C, any street which is located partially or totally within a development project may be dedicated as a public street, provided that it is constructed in accordance with the manual design, manual of design for public improvements, and further provided that a record subdivision plot be submitted and approved by the Planning Commission and dedication of the street, accepted by city council in accordance with Section 122607. Public notice was not reissued, as this is a continued case, and all letters and emails that were received in the first initial public hearing were forwarded to commission members. The U.C. Department comments have not changed, but the applicant has provided extensive responses to the city staff's comments. They're a little blurry on the screen, but they are in your staff packets, and I will let the applicant speak to all their responses when it is at time. Here is your review criteria for preliminary development plan. Here is the proposed front elevation option one, side elevation option one, back elevation option one, and option two is not included in your staff packets, as I received it after staff packets went out, but these are in direct response to city staff comments regarding Here is the application and letter of intent. As for staff recommendation, based on the staff report provided, the staff recommends approval of the map amendment and zone change for the preliminary development plan for the towns of Lincoln Village to construct 59 townhome units on a total of 5.717 acres. The project will need approval by city council for the planned development, map amendment, and zone change. And that will conclude my staff report.
Thank you, Claire. Okay, any questions for Ms. Fetters before we open the public hearing? Any questions? Okay. All right, we'll open the public hearing now. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward. Mr. Cash, we'll swear you in.
If you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before this commission will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hold me back. I didn't try to sound stupid.
Yes. No, no, yeah. How about now?
There we go.
Alex Batch, Bayer Becker, 1404 Ray Street, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45202. So, we did, the applicant did provide responses to all the staff comments. I thought, you know, Claire already did a nice job with the presentation, I could just walk through these quickly, and then if you have any questions, happy to answer them at the end. So, the first comments were from city management. Number one was just confirming that the proposed walk, Claire, if you wouldn't mind, can you put the plan up there, maybe easier to reference? So, comment number one was to confirm that the proposed walk that goes east to west through the open space not be gravel, and that a crosswalk be provided. The applicant agrees to that. The walking path will be concrete or asphalt, and the, there will be a crosswalk striped on Public Street A, so that the public can safely get across between the two open spaces. The applicant also agrees that open space amenities, such as dog parks and seating areas, will go before the Development Code Administrator for Approval. Detailed plans will be provided at the final PUD stage and construction document stage. The historic marker, which is difficult to see up there, but it's along Central Avenue that was requested by the city there, must be maintained. That was a comment from city management. The applicant agrees to that. They will maintain that as part of their HOA. The frontage along Central Avenue needs landscaping and mounding to protect and screen the properties from the roadway. Applicant response is that detailed landscape drawings will be prepared as part of the final PUD. It should be noted that the proposed setback for those units, 1 and 53 there on the end, were setback a distance to match the larger setback along, of the homes along Alameda Circle there. We wanted to maintain that green space as you're, as you're traveling down Central Avenue. And again, we'll work with, with staff at final plan to ensure that adequate amount of landscaping and buffering is provided in that open space zone. Another comment, that wasn't necessarily in the staff comments, but came up in the last public hearing, was the location of the pond and its adjacency to Central Avenue. That will be a dry detention basin, but we want to ensure that it's setback far enough from Central Avenue to allow for that, the landscape buffer to extend across in front of it. And also, the applicant has agreed to put a fence between Central Avenue and, and the basin to provide extra safety and protection between that, between there, and screening. There was a question about the eastern property line and whether there'll be a retaining wall there. A detailed grading plan hasn't been done at this preliminary level, but that'll be done with retaining wall layouts and heights at construction drawing level. That being said, the buildings do sit down at the base of the hillside, so the intention is to preserve that hillside as much as possible, along with the vegetation there, to the best extent possible. I think if there, you know, if there is a retaining wall behind some of those units, it would be minimal. I think it would be a small, more decorative retaining wall than, something that would be larger and more impactful there. The overall elevations are acceptable, however, units 1 and 53 need extra embellishment, the ones that face Central Avenue. The applicant intends to include brick wrap on all the first-floor facades and includes those two units that are facing Central Avenue, and they'll...
Say that again, please. Say that again.
Yeah, the, the full brick wrap on all first floors on all sides, yeah, for every unit across, on the development. I know that was an item that you guys were voting on, a text amendment for the code as well. It's law now, yep. Where was I? Oh, so, just to reiterate, again, between those units, they're setback further so that, you know, you can provide adequate landscaping between there and Central Avenue. So, in addition to that brick wrap, you'll also have added landscape elements, and again, those will be determined at final plan, at the next phase. Moving into the City Public Works and Engineering Department, there was a comment about a traffic impact study. We did submit a trip generation letter that estimates 42 total AM peak hour trips and 46 total PM peak hour trips. The City of Middletown Manual of Design for Public Improvements does state that a traffic study would be required if it's expected to generate more than 50 peak hour trips, so there shouldn't be a study required per the Middletown code requirements there. Utilities and road ownership and maintenance, so there was some discrepancy between the application last time and the plan itself. The Street A is proposed to be a public street, and maintenance and all other utility questions can definitely be answered at the final PUD stage at the next level. There was a comment about individual unit ownership, appearing to include yard space with driveways and lot lines through the buildings. Yeah, it's the applicant's intention to have each townhouse unit be on its own, a fee simple lot, which would include a rear and, a front and rear yard, and then side yard for the units that are on the ends. The HOA will be established, and it would manage all exterior yards and landscaping, and that would include the common areas, it would also include the yard areas within each individual lot. So, the HOA will maintain everything outside of the building. Howard Avenue is an alley with partial pavement and dead end. Is there a plan to upgrade the pavement and curbing for alternative access point? Also, I'll address this at the same time as comment number five, it says fire department access appears to be limited with no turnaround capability provided. So, it's the intention of the applicant to utilize Howard Avenue and work with city staff and fire department to determine what the best solution is there at the final plan, whether it be a through street for the fire truck to be able to get through, or whether it's determined that maybe just a turnaround at the end there on Howard Avenue is sufficient and would be provided there. We'll continue those conversations with the city and the fire department to determine the best path forward there. We did run vehicle tracking, which is a program that you run in AutoCAD and Civil 3D that allows you to basically drive, quote unquote, drive a fire truck through the development to ensure that it, the adequate widths and turning radiuses are provided for the fire truck. And a fire truck would be able to make that turn from the development onto Howard, and if it was deemed necessary, a turnaround could be provided on Howard where they actually just use it, use a portion of it to turn around and go back through the development, if, if that was deemed the best path forward by the fire department at final plan level. Let's see here. Again, so, in reference to utilities and easements, easements will be provided per public utilities, and again, detailed plans will be provided at final PUD and construction document level. The basin should not extend over individual lots. The applicant agrees that at final plan and construction level, the basin will be designed so that it stays outside of owner-occupied parcels. There was a comment about the house on the corner there of Alameda Circle, on the northeast corner of the property, their driveway, existing driveway, which I think shared a drive with the former school. So, a portion of that drive is, yes, exactly, right there. So, the applicant estimates there's about 10 to 11 feet of existing pavement width for ingress egress outside of the towns of Lincoln Village property, so on that individual owner's property, and the applicant obviously would intend not to impact that at all. Lastly, there was a comment about the treelons being five feet and the types of trees that you could plant in that limited space. The applicant agrees the tree species will be selected based on the, on the proposed width of the trelon, which is five feet, and those detailed landscape plans will be provided at final PUD. It should be noted that the City of Middletown, Middletown Street Master Plan indicates that treelons as small as five feet are acceptable in the City of Middletown. Then, the Community and Economic Development Department had a comment about the color palette on the elevations of the townhouses. The applicant agrees and can work with the staff on that to revise architectural color palettes as necessary. You saw they already provided one additional alternative option there. It's more of a white color scheme. We're happy to work with, with staff and, as we move forward into the final plan stage. And then, one additional note at the bottom, it wasn't necessarily in response to a comment, but just about the zoning itself, and Claire touched on this a little bit, but the current zoning for the property is R4 attached residential, which allows for multifamily dwellings and buildings above two-four. attached residential, which allows for multifamily dwellings and buildings above two four units, which is essentially what's shown on the applicant's proposed plan here. However, when you look at the site development standards, they're written in such a way that allows for multiple dwellings on one individual lot. So, one building on a lot, but multiple, multiple units. And that's based on the minimum lot area allowed per principal dwelling unit, which is more conducive to a rental apartment community. And so, the applicant is requesting this zone change in part to receive a PUD to allow for sale individual units on, on individual parcels. So, this would be a for sale product on individual parcels. That is all the comments. Happy to answer any of the questions. I also have Adam Cristo here with me as well, so, thank you.
Thank you, Alex. I can see a lot of work that was done to answer all these different questions that we had from the last time. I wanted to go back to the, just the issue of safety itself and, and looking at the, at the drawing here, because it says that, in, in the, in the response itself, that necessary improvements would be made. Would that necessary improvement, if it were to come to this, if you needed to take 27 and 28 for a cul-de-sac, would that be something that the developer, Mr. Cristo, was willing to do at this point? I mean, there's not a lot of clarity there in terms of just what necessary improvements would be done.
Yeah.
And I'm always hesitant to make a deal before I know the terms. So, it's, in this case, giving preliminary development approval without knowing a little more detail on that, that's, that gives me some pause, only because we're looking at, you can see that we're already at a high density development as it is. But Howard Avenue behind there is extremely narrow, so it's, it's hard for me to envision, and, and you guys know that, that it's an alley is what it is. And just, you know, I'm just having a hard time being able to see how we're going to get a fire truck in and out of the development itself if something more substantive is not done there. Because while you've answered a lot of questions, which I appreciate that, there really isn't any substantive change to the actual development itself. Pretty much, everything stays the same. Well, I shouldn't state it that way. That's not, that's not accurate. You've, you've done some things to address. What I'm saying is in terms of safety, I'm just concerned, how, what's, what, how far are you willing to go here if necessary?
Do I need to swear?
Oh, you do, you do. Yes, sir. We have to swear in, Mr. Cristo, yes.
You sound like a swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give for this commission will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help yourself.
Adam Cristo, 75, 94, Tyler's Place Boulevard, West Chester, Ohio. So, as Alex mentioned, he ran the turning radius and, you know, we're going to work with staff and the fire department to ensure that there's adequate turnaround. So, we're not, we're not gonna, we're proposing to get approval from staff to move forward. So, anything that we would do there, whether it, if there is a requirement to make some kind of improvement to, to make sure the fire truck can turn around, we're going to do that. But, you know, with the engineering and with sta, only with staff approval.
Okay. What kind of interaction have you had so far with the, or the fire chief? Have you, I mean, have you had the conversation where you've actually looked at this and looked at the turning radius and done that kind of due diligence before we're here?
Yeah, yes, we, that's why Alex ran, he took, actual full size, they have programs that run this, and he ran it on the turnaround module in CAD and it showed that there was enough turning radius. Again, we will go through that with staff and the fire department and make sure it is sufficient with them. And, you know, we will, we will seek, you know, of course, staff's approval will be a condition of, of us moving forward to make sure the adequate turnaround is there.
Okay. Thank you.
I see the streets 24 feet in width. Is on-street parking going to be permitted?
There will not, there won't be parallel on-street parking on the road itself. There's no Zen 90-degree parking spaces in the middle of the development.
Right.
Yeah. So, the, the reduction in the width of the rideaway is because of that exactly. There won't be on-street parking. So, the pavement width gets reduced from, it's usually around 28 or 29 feet, it's reduced down to 24 feet because you don't have that on-street parking.
As you can see the congestion that that would create if, if anybody disobeys and not know parking signs and a fire engine has to get in there, they're just not going to get in. Unless they come in the back way through Howard, if in fact that accommodates a fire, a fire engine.
And, and, you know, we've done these develops for, and since, you know, the, the driveways, there, you would, if someone parks on the street, they'd be blocking someone and someone would be very upset. So, it's very unlikely anyone would, I mean, we'll have restrictions, it'll be managed by the HOA, but someone would generally have to park in front of someone's driveway to do on-street parking.
I'm just envisioning Thanksgiving coming.
Yeah.
And parties being, and no parking other than on the street there if, if a resident has a family of five cars coming in there.
Well, that's why we, we provided the additional middle parking spaces.
Mr. Moore, I have a point, I have a question.
Mr. Moore, unfortunately, we have to swear you in.
Oh.
Yeah, we do.
I remember, go ahead.
You sound like you swear the testimony you're about to give before this commission will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help yourself.
So, to go back to Mr. Moore's point, this is just preliminary and I get that. So, it's going to get to city council, which will be, will be a final decision. And I guess my question to you is, is potentially losing unit 27 and 28, is that a squeal point to you or is that a deal breaker? Because I have a concern. I, I understand models and everything else, but I actually drove my van, which I have a small Dodge work van, down, and it's, it's an alley, I get it. But here's my, this is my concern, I've actually had a conversation with the fire chief. For whatever reason, if the emergency responders are coming from this part of town and they're, they're having to get into these units here, they're going to try to get there as quick as they can. They're not going to go up to here, they're not going to go all the way to Central and come straight down. I'm not talking about a name, unless I'm not talking about a police car, I'm talking about a pumper. I'm talking about a big fire truck. I doubt if a ladder truck would ever come because these are condos or townhouse. And I'm not trying to stir anything up here, but I'm just saying, this is preliminary, but when it gets to city council, I guarantee you, this is going to be discussed, because I have a concern about that and that it's not your road to maintain. That it's our city's to maintain, but I'm really concerned about trying to turn a pumper truck there with the, with that scale that it's at right now. So, and I'm not telling you, oh, you know, just plan to lose $600,000, that's not my intention. Just be prepared for that, that conversation to happen at the next level. Because first and foremost, I am for, as I've said before many times, about the development of the city, but I'm also very much for the safety of our citizens, because if the city's not safe, they leave, they go someplace else where they can feel safe. So, just keep that in mind. This is preliminary, so we're, this is all good right now and they're going to decide, but it's going to get to us and I will be bringing this up again. So, I want, I want a conversation with your team and the fire marshal. I want, and I want documents from that saying, we're good, we can take a pumper, a pumper truck, meaning the ones that carry the fire hoses and the big truck can come down Howard and turn in there with units 27 and 28 in place, no problem. And turn, and not, they don't have to be able to do donuts, but you'll be able to turn in and service these units down here in case of a fire. Because who knows? If there's a fire going on and there's people standing there with their iPhones taking pictures after they call 911, I hope, they, they might not be able to get down in there. So, we want them to be able to get into any egress to access this, these areas. So, back to you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
So, my main concern with the way that the street for this development is laid out is, first, I want to understand, what is the rationale for just a straight north-south street instead of, say, connecting Linden and then having like a cul-de-sac? Because to me, when you look at the map, you've got Public Street A and you have Schaefer Street and then you have, what is this, Edgewood? And that creates a lot of conflict points for traffic and for pedestrians in a very small area. And I live in that neighborhood and I, I walk a lot, I drive a lot, and I can tell you, this area right here does not need more conflict points. And I think that especially that is in contradiction with the concept of Central Avenue as a walkable commercial corridor. That many conflict points between vehicle and vehicle, vehicle and pedestrian does not, it's a different type of community safety than fire and police. So, is there a rationale behind that or?
I mean, part of the rationale, I mean, we worked with the members of city council back and forth on different prototypes. One came from another developer and this was sort of vetted through them and approved and went to contract. So, it sort of was, and works with city council and members and, you know, that type of design was never brought up as an issue or a concern.
Just to add one more, one more point to that, it, it was the, also the intention to, to fit in with the, the existing urban gridded fabric of, of that community itself. So, we definitely wanted to pay homage to that. I think that was a goal of, I think it's the, was in the comprehensive plan where it stated that it wanted it to fit in, if I'm stating that correctly or not, about fitting in with the historic gridded character of, of the, maybe it wasn't the, I forget where I saw that from, but that's, that was the intention, yeah.
Maybe it was on a movie or something.
And I guess to address the Howard Avenue concerns, could, instead of maybe making Public Street A a cul-de-sac, and I know that there are concerns over the amount of units, just, just based off of the public comments from last time about the, the amount of units, would it be a possible remedy to connect with Linden Avenue and then have that be an access point for, for fire engines instead? I know that would mean sacrificing some green space, which I am definitely a fan of, but it's public safety.
You know, I understand your concern, but, you know, I, I grew up on, in Middletown and there are multiple communities that have no auxiliary, it's one end, and I mean, it's, it's standardized all across the city and pretty much an acceptable and from a safety standpoint, not an issue. I mean, this is all over the city of Middletown, so I know this issue's coming up, but it's a standardized practice and I don't, you know, generally it's not considered a safety issue because it's been vetted multiple times throughout the community and other communities.
I understand.
Mr. Cristo, the, the water basin itself, I thought I heard it would be a, a dry water basin, is that the plan now? Has that changed from the last time? Is that, or was it always intended to be dry water?
It was always intended to be dry. I don't know why you showed it blue.
Looks better.
Yeah, it looks better. But yeah, it's a dry basin, so.
I think most of us did envision that being a, well, looking the way it does here on the, on the, on the drawing, so it's.
Correct. So, yeah, it is, it is a dry basin.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you. The, there was a lot of questions last time too about the traffic impact. I know that the study that we have seems to maybe allay those concerns, but again, the number of units, you know, there's Schaefer Street coming off, you know, there was a lot of folks that were concerned about, is, the understanding here that we're looking at peak time is that, and it didn't meet that, I forget what they, was it 50 was what I read for the criteria there, so it was, what was the number there again, offhand? I can't remember, was it 42?
Yeah.
46. 46 was the.
Forty, 42 AM and 46 PM.
46 and PM. So, we're on that threshold there in terms of whether this would need a traffic study or not. I know here, we're arguing that we do not, but looking at the, well, just the way that's laid out here, coming off of Central into the development itself, peak hour and with Schaefer having a light there, still is a little bit of a concern. Just trying to work my way through that, yes, so. Any other questions for Mr. Cristo and Alex?
Just following up on what you were asking about this peak, uh, peak hour, peak trip hours, if I got that, peak hour trips. Trip, I didn't, I didn't have this whole package, I had.
I have.
Digital, and so I'm not sure I missed, I may have missed the trip generation letter. Is that, how did the trip generation calculate these peak trip hours, you know?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the, the response to the traffic impact there at Schaefer, Franklin, Central and Edgewood. Trip generation letter, and that's capitalized, so I'm assuming that's an organization or entity that's provided us with this letter?
Yeah, so, our, we have a, a traffic department at Bear Becker that, you know, follows the, there's a specific manuals and guidelines for that trip generation letter that.
It's interesting how they can calculate that unless they sat out there and manually like, or had, had the scripts across the road.
Yeah, that would, that would be a, that would be a more, that would be a traffic study. This is, this is a letter that, that uses formulas to generate the, based on the uses of what they predict the peak hour trips would be.
Where is that? I want to see that trip.
It's page 48.
It's, it's page 52, is that it?
It starts on page 48.
48. Well, I'm not going to tell you how to do it, but I'm assuming they've identified the criteria that they used in order to reach those conclusions. I'm just curious, I, I drive that pretty much as AJ was saying here, that's how I, that's my central artery and it seems like I encounter. That, when I understand that 42 peak trip hour, that's, that's over an hour period there at that location during eight o'clock in the morning, they're counting 48 cars or 46 cars.
Yes.
David, down under trip generation, it gives the source of their methodology, books, manuals.
Sometimes practical, practical presence is a better marker, but that's, I'm not going to dispute what their conclusions are, because I haven't done it either. I'm not going to sit out there for an hour between 7:30 and 8:30 and count cars coming. That's both ways, I'm assuming, correct?
So, are you talking about the traffic, the existing traffic on Central Avenue? Or this would be, this would be the estimated trips generated by the development itself in and out of the development?
The development in and out from Public Street A.
Correct, yeah, in and out of the development. Yep. Sorry about that.
That, that, so they're not even taking into account, the reason, the reason I say, I live in a, I live in a subdivision that orders State Route 122 and at eight o'clock to get out of my subdivision, I know I'm counting many, many more cars than, that would be over an hour's period. I don't know if that's consistent with the Central Avenue, but that's, that's in conjunction with the traffic coming in and out of Public Street A.
Sure. Yeah, I understand, yeah.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Sure.
And, and just to follow up on that, again, this is per City of Middletown's Manual Design for Public Improvements. I mean, this is just following basically the code on trip generation when a traffic study would be required.
Only to that regard, only to that extent is when the traffic study is required. The other line data that's being provided to the city is your data.
Correct, yeah, we're just following, I mean, we're just, yeah, okay.
I think Mr. Cash raises a very practical point, though. I mean, when we're looking at one set of data and just the practical reality of, most of us who have been here long enough to know what it looks like on Central Avenue and Schaefer, it's a little suspect, just looking at just the calculation in itself. I think the practical reality's going to be very different than what we see just there. I guess the point I'm trying to make is I, I think it's essential that a traffic impact study would be done at that location considering what the density.
So, those are going to.
So, those are going to be conversations to have with our Public Works and Engineering team, they have a whole nother criteria system for the, the developer to address.
Yeah, but in terms of the public, in terms of just reviewing this for preliminary development plan, I mean, in the last hearing itself, that was one of the main concerns for folks, I mean...
I don't disagree, I just don't want this to get hung up on something that we don't have jurisdiction over.
I'm just saying that, because that, that's an important part of my vote moving forward tonight, that's all I'm saying, as I think it's important to look at that, as I pointed out in twenty-seven, twenty-eight for preliminary development, it's not trying to drag my feet on this or push it down any further, I know folks are eager to get moving on it, but again, I still feel the responsibility to, to make certain that those questions are asked, and I, I understand your point.
Uh, I concur, especially on the traffic.
I also agree, I think it's very important to make sure that we are connecting the development with the trajectory that the city wants to go on, especially in regards to walkability for the, for the central corridor, um, and I, like I said, that many traffic conflicts in such a small space with the, the three roads and a arterial road that's very heavily traveled, I just, um, I don't necessarily see this speci, I'm not trying to obstruct it, I'm very for the, uh, the, the more dense development, I think that this preliminary layout needs some tweaking.
Thank you, AJ, any, any other comments or questions for Cristo, Alex?
Nope.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor, please come forward, anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the proposal, please come forward, speaking in favor, speaking in opposition, please come forward, please come forward, join us at the micro throne, and, uh, Mr. Cash will swear you in, sir on this side, please.
My name is...
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before this commission will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the true self you got?
Yes, I do.
If you identify yourself, please.
Is the microphone on?
Yes, sir.
My name is Thomas Tyrone, I live at two-six-zero-eight Central Avenue in Middletown, I was present at the last meeting where this was suspended to this meeting, and the objections raised, and I didn't, actually didn't raise an objection at that time, but the objections raised by John and Chichi Heda, I'm here to reinforce, because I also have the same objections, that the density is inappropriate for the surrounding area, that we have a very high density, um, let's say broadly inconsistent development of townhomes surrounded by single-family residential, so on the, on the east, on the west, north and south, where single-family residential, and then all of a sudden, right in the middle of it, is placed a three-X, potentially, I'm just drawing an estimate, three-X, maybe four-X density? Now, we want this to be a walkable area, and we want it to reflect and improve the community, but what happens is that you have a, I mean, I understand these are townhomes, but it starts to feel like an apartment, okay, or, um, and, and this, I think, really then tends to detract from the feeling of the area, okay, I live close to here, I think you spend some time here, a fair amount of time, so beyond the traffic, the reflection that we heard, I think fairly at the last meeting, and I'm here to reflect again, is that the, the density itself is broadly an issue to the people or to the community who are taking an interest, we haven't heard anybody from the community who said, oh yeah, that's great, um, I think there are some other issues that are brought about, this particular plan, the twenty-four foot wide, um, so personally, I think I'd like to see, I think, I'd like to see less density, less density would be more consistent with the entire area, it would blend in a lot better, it wouldn't stand out as a sore thumb saying, hey, here's a high-density area sitting right in the middle of it, it would also reduce the issues with respect to wire track access, traffic, and potentially also reduce the issue of the intersection of Schaefer and Central, right, because what you could do, and I'm just making this as a suggestion, is make Schaefer a through street. Now, I understand that the economics of the development are such that there's a lot of fixed costs associated with making a development, and that you want to be able to amortize them by putting as many units as you possibly can on them, that therefore, you know, more units, you amortize the fixed cost, and therefore the fixed cost component of every unit is lower, right, which naturally increases the profit per unit, but at the expense of the feeling of the community. So, I really want the planning board to be able to consider that there are a lot of all, other alternatives that geometrically would work here, but in the end, are we really happy with that level of density in that area? I'm for when I'm not, and I think we have other residents that have expressed the same viewpoint, so with that, I'll leave my comments.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward?
May I do solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before this commission will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the true self you got?
Yes, I do.
If you identify yourself, please, ma'am.
My name is Kathy Hodel, and I've lived on Central Avenue up and on since I've been nineteen years old, I love my neighborhood, and this plan does not go with my neighborhood, we have so much traffic that comes up and down Central, and you've got the side streets, and Middletown only has so much land, so when you do something, I want you to consider everything, because it took years to turn, tear down Lincoln School down there. Central in Belmont, I've seen more accidents on it since I was a kid to now, if you go down to Schaefer, when it went to Section Eight, a lot of the houses, there's a lot of crime that came in, when you get to this neighborhood, the development, yes, I understand that Middletown needs to develop, but I want you guys to use the best plan, because there's a whole lot of other options that could be considered, and once you build and do something, it's final, we still don't know how the new houses over where Lincoln School are going to play in with traffic, they are at least houses, townhomes, you've got so many people, and you don't know what you're going to attract in those, and that's about all I can say, I don't want to see my neighborhood ruined, I've lived there most of my life, and I want to see the city of Middletown, if they do something, make it for the community, we are not set up for this in any way, shape, or form, and I am going to conclude my comments, please think about what you do, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward, anyone else wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward, Mr. Cash will swear you in. No one else wishing to speak in opposition, okay, we'll close the public hearing, and we can move to the liberation. I would, uh, I just want to make a couple comments, um, in some ways, I almost feel like I'm in an impossible situation on this particular case, because, um, very much want to see the site developed, it's been there for a while, uh, many years now, maybe even as long as maybe ten years that it's sat vacant there, um, and I think that this, this development as it stands right now, as much as I would like to vote for it, I mean, Mr. Horn pointed out twenty-seven and twenty-eight, I do have concerns about safety, I think that, um, I think folks have really tried to answer a lot of questions that we had from the last hearing, um, but it's kind of going through a checklist of items and then missing maybe the larger point in some ways, this, as it looks on, on the picture here, it's, is asking a lot, I think, from our community, um, when you look to the historic district that's there, folks are expecting, um, for a responsible development, I think, I don't think that folks, at least from my judgment, they didn't say that they wanted no development, I think folks were looking, um, for a responsible development, and I'm, I'm struggling, because I want to try to find a solution to make this work, I really do, uh, I don't want to waste staff's time, I don't want to waste Mr. Horn's time on council or the board's time, but when you're in a situation where you're being asked to stick around, you know, a square peg in a round hole here, it's, 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 I don't know how, how to, to make this work, um, you know, for me, I would love to see a little more creativity in the plan, I mean, what we have right here is an opportunity, and what we're doing is we're saying, here's the plan, this is what we got, uh, you know, hope it works out, we'll answer the questions, and then we move forward, but that really doesn't serve, I think, the larger goal of really improving this site and really making it better for the community, it's certainly a development for this site, is it the best that we can do? I don't think so, I really don't think so, and I think that, um, when you look at Schaefer, and you look at Central, you know, this, like Mr. Cash was saying, I think we're faced with a practical problem here, despite the calculation, despite the math run through the program, I don't think that that's really going to add up when we have this development here in, in terms of just that calculation for a traffic impact study, I think is vital, but the bigger, I could go through a list of things that I would like to tweak, but I would, you know, if there was a creative way to do this, you know, I was hoping that we would come back after all the comments, and we would see a little creativity built into the plan, not just a checklist that says, we've answered all your questions, let's go forward, because it's really not, I think, where the community would like, I would feel like I was wronging my neighbors if I were to vote for something like this at this point, that's not to say that I don't want something, or I wouldn't want to work with Mr. Cristo to make that work, I very much would like to do that, but when, but again, I feel like I'm in an impossible situation here trying to make it work, I mean, it just is, it's asking too much, in addition to the, to the layout, and I think Mr. Mintel mentioned the layout, in addition to what we're looking at here, just looking at the density, looking at the layout, looking at how we got a street that basically says, hey, we'll carve out some radius to get a fire truck, I hope that works, there's really not much else than just putting a multi-family, high-density development in this area, that's what we're doing here, and then we're just going off and, and saying, case closed, I don't want to, I don't want to say case closed, I really don't, I've been struggling with this all day, trying to figure out how I'm going to actually address this, I really have, because I don't want to waste anyone's time, but as it stands right now, I don't think I could vote for it, I really don't, and I hate to say that, gentlemen, I really do, and to Mr. Horn as well, I just, I don't feel comfortable voting for it as it stands in the current form, I think we need to be more creative, I think that we can do better, and I think that our residents, I think they deserve better, I really do, I think our community deserves a little bit better than what we're doing right here, um, I think that Mr. Cristo has the capacity to do better, I think that there's a lot of creativity on his team, I think Alex could do a great job laying this out, I think that we could do a lot better than what we have right here, so I'll, that's all I'll say.
I agree with Mr. Moore, um, especially on the point of creativity, I feel like this site means a lot of things to a lot of people in this community, and that doing a sensible, well-measured, um, project on this site is paramount, it's, it's a little cookie cutter, um, for my taste, um, although I am a fan of the density, I think it's something that the city really needs, um, one of the concerns that I have with, with the project overall is that I don't think that this is being built for current residents of Middletown that are seeking other housing options besides single-family housing, um, it is trying to be townhomes without being a townhome, and it is trying to be single-family homes without being single, single-family homes, it's toeing a line, the fact that there was even debate over what to call them, I think, was a little bit of an early red flag, um, but, um, the, I remember seeing in here that the price range is supposed to start in the three-hundred thousands, and that, to me, does not scream something that suits the needs of the people that currently live in Middletown, however, it is something that I'm willing to overlook for more dense and sensible development, because I understand that the bottom line of the developer is also important, um, but, uh, that is kind of how I feel, um, just bouncing off of Mr. Moore's comments.
Mr. Moore, I need a moment, Claire, um, so, this is preliminary, and I, this is just for the education of everyone in the room, so if they have four votes, go forward with preliminary, where does it go next?
City Council.
Go to city council, so then city council, and that's for final?
No, that's...
That's not final, I say, right?
That's for preliminary approval.
Preliminary approval, so then we, all five of us, get to have those same conversation, your concerns, and, as I've said this before, and Mr. Moore's taken advantage of this, you're allowed to come to city council, and you have four fun-filled minutes that you can say whatever you want, and, and I know I, I try to keep things lighthearted, because this is such, you know, and it, this is time out of your lives that we appreciate, but what I mean by that is, Mr. Moore's done it, you bring your data, you say your concerns, we're sitting there listening and saying, okay, now we got to make this preliminary, okay, so, four votes here, comes to city council, we get, we have the preliminary, three votes go there, where's it go from there?
So then it's, they get a year to address comments if you approve it with conditions, um, and then they come back with a final development plan, showing they've answered all conditions.
So we can redline it with your concerns, and they have a year to address, just like the, the questions they have in here in their packet, and if they choose, nope, not doing it, this is, Middletown's not our huckleberry, moving on, then someone else moves in, okay, but they do that, and they address it, where's it go from there?
Back to planning, commission.
Back to you guys, for final?
Yep.
For final, for, so you guys get the final deci, decision, I'm not trying to push anyone into a box and say, do this, I'm just trying to tell you, this is, and does this go to architectural or zoning for any reason?
So, not architectural... So not architectural anymore since that text amendment was included for applicability and waivers. But every single unit or three or four unit building will come to zoning as well as all their dog park. The open seating with the trellis above, that lighting sidewalk, that all comes across my desk.
So it goes from here to City Council to architectural? Nope, this goes back to here? After all the red lines is, is satisfied. Where does, so do they do architectural after final?
They don't have to go to architectural now.
Okay, so, or what was your one, zoning, you said?
Zoning.
So does it go to zoning before it comes back here?
No, so they need final development approval.
Okay, so they have to have your approval before they can go, go to zoning, which is another group of folks. I think a couple of you guys are on zoning also. So this is not the last say. This is preliminary. And that's all I'm saying. And keep that in mind. We've had this discussion before. So this is not a rubber stamp, start buying your materials, here comes, here comes the, the excavators. There's still more conversation that needs to happen. And keep that in mind. And as, as you have heard my, my comment, there will be conversation at City Council. But I do encourage everyone, because I have to be there anyways, to do your city comments, citizen comments. And like I said, you get four minutes. Just do your research. And I've, I've encouraged other boards to please do that just because this is your city and you're on a board, but you're also a citizen. And we want these comments because, as the gentleman mentioned and lady, once it's done and it's stopped and it's in Mr. Tuttle's hand, which is the building official, it's done. It's going to be built, it's over, and we're going to have these to help future citizens and current citizens to enjoy a new home. A safe home, but, and, and a code-compliant home. Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, I was, I was, I was just trying to think through as, as Mr. Horn was, was talking there. And, and again, I'm really addressing both maybe council and, and Mr. Cristo. I mean, is there any conversation just with feedback that we've gotten here? Is, is, is this kind of where we're at at this point with, with the development? Do you think it would be wise for us to maybe grant another continuance to, to do anything else with this? Or you, do you feel as a developer that this is pretty close to where you would want to be? I know there'll be additional questions with council and things like that. Is there any, 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 any room here to maybe modify or to be a little more creative in terms of how we, we focus on the development? Yes, sir, please. Like I said, I, Mr. Cristo, I'll just, I'll just be honest with you here. Like I said, I feel like I'm in an impossible situation. I don't want, I don't want to belabor the point. I don't want to waste staff's time, Mr. Horn's time. And I'm not trying to be a naysayer on the project, I really not. But I, I do struggle with this because I do believe that folks are, they're looking at this in terms of safety and some other concerns. And I, I feel like just moving this forward, even without it going to, to, to council, I, we're all going to be judged for what we do in this development. And I'm just kind of struggling with that. I'm having a hard time with that. I want to see development and I think that, I think that you can deliver on this development. I really do. But I, I'm just having a hard time giving my vote tonight. Can you help me out, so?
Well, so we're having a hard time too. It's a difficult situation here because, you know, this was negotiated with council. This is, you know, went through two iterations with another developer and then with council. This is what they wanted to see.
Okay. Let me ask you this too, because one of the things like, one of the things too that I remember when we had, this goes back a little bit towards the COVID period, so things were not as easy to have open meeting at the time. But when we looked at the Roosevelt site and when we looked at Lincoln School site and the public comments as we looked at the master plan change, folks were very, very strongly opposed to multifamily on these two locations in particular. If you look back at those comments, probably if you looked across the entire master plan, the two areas that stood out with the most comments were folks were just adamantly opposed to multifamily. It's these two sites, you know.
As a correction, I think their, the terminology gets really confused. You, multifamily is mostly referred to multiple dwelling units on one parcel. That's why it's called generally multifamily. And multifamily generally means rental because when you have multiple units on one parcel, what else are you going to do with it? So when you go to townhomes, and that's what these are, townhomes by definition are units that are attached that are on individual parcels that are for sale individually. So I mean, just, it just seems that words get mixed up quite often.
I totally agree. There's a little, there's some, there's some issues there with terminology. And I only use that term multifamily here in this instance because I think as legal counsel showed, going at the, looking at the code, I also tried to look at the code there. We actually do use multifamily there in terms of four units. These will be individual units. I know there was a lot of discussion about whether single-family attached was actually in our codes, not. But the, the way it's, the, you know, the language reads here, while these are single-family, I think we still use multifamily in our code. Am I correct on that, counsel? So it's four units, I think, is what, way it's designed. But really what I'm saying here though is that terminology aside, most folks in the community look at this as, they're going to look at this as being a higher-density development, a multifamily development. It's not single-family development is what I'm saying, as, as, as opposed to having something where we look on the map and see more of a single, that being compatible at least with the master plan. Folks were really concerned about these now. If we believe that there's changing economic, we can make that argument that there's changing conditions and that we want a different direction. That's, that's a certainly valid argument to make. I'm just sharing that for the record, that there, these two sites in particular were two sites that were just debated round and round about what the future of that would be.
What I could speak to that is this is zoned, R4, high-density, multifamily. So if the city had a different vision after they bought it, they could have rezoned it. And, you know, this is the direction. There's a major housing shortage. They wanted additional units. Again, this is R4, high-density residential. And if we went straight zoning on this, we didn't, we didn't have to come here. We could have basically have done the same exact project with a few tweaks. And that's what we ran into because we could have just made all those four units one lot and had multiple units on one lot and been compliant with straight zoning. And we're like, we don't want to do that. We don't want to put rentals here. We want to do for sale. I think you have to really understand that point. We're only here because we wanted to change to for-sell, single-family units. Because straight zoning before not coming into a PUD would allowed multifamily project true with multiple units on one parcel.
That question earlier about 27 and 28, I guess that's just for council and next discussion, but.
You know, if there's an issue and we have to do it based on staff, I mean, and there's a safety issue about a turnaround? Yes, I mean, we'll absolutely consider that if that comes down to it.
Any other comments from Mr. Cristo? I know we're trying to deliberate at this point. Looking for some feedback from my colleagues here.
And one of the point on the, you know, I, I don't know how many units, but remember that was a commercial property. I mean, it was a school with, I don't know how many ins and outs. I mean, parents pickup, buses, I mean, insane. We're definitely reducing that. Then it was commercial property with offices and multiple units with tons of ins and outs. So I think you've got to remember where the history and where we're at now, so.
I remember the old medical offices that were there, yeah.
I, I just want us to consider that. I don't want you to, I don't really want you to be in the spot you're in because I think I hear you loud and clear. You've been talking with the city for a long time. And I don't think the general public knows that. And I don't think the general public knows the role that the city staff has played. And I'm not damning anybody. I'm just saying that you've been working with city staff and with, I guess, a previous council.
And we have a contract with this plan on it, approved, signed off.
As a part of your acquiring land.
Yes, correct.
Accurate?
Yes.
So you're not the devil.
Thank you.
Seriously. And I want the people to know that. So, you know, it's not, you didn't make this stuff up. You've been kind of led down a path over time because the city does want the development. What Mr. Horn said at the last meeting is correct. And as, as an old man, I want to acknowledge it. We need affordable housing for younger people, without a doubt. I'm not saying this is it. I, I'm kind of citing with the chairman on the, the density in this particular location. But I just don't want to run you off. And I don't want people to think that you're, you know, something evil because you're not. You've been dealing with the city for years on this. So I take it as a good faith effort. I don't know that I can vote for it, but you're okay.
Well, thank you. And, and speaking to the, the part of density, you know, you say, you know, you could fit more in because it fattens the developer's wallet. You know, that isn't the case here. We, trying to build new homes in an older community that hasn't seen a new development and I can't, I don't know how far back we're going here. So you try to construct a new home and then you have, you know, these things, 300 price point. And then you're competing with other existing, much larger homes, you know, around selling for 300. So the only way to be able to get the price so it's attainable is through having more density. If you try to break this up and do just a single family project, the price would go way up. And then your attainability for the people that, you know, for the multiple, you know, whether it be teachers, administrators, wanting to have a new home in the community, they've been thrown out of that option. They have to go to the older home stock or whatnot. And then there's a big need to have self-managed communities where they don't have to mow their grass. They got a busy lifestyle. This offers all those things. Plus, and a major housing shortage, you know, giving people an opportunity to live somewhere and live in a new home that's energy-efficient, that has all the niceties of what new home construction brings these days, so.
Thank you, thank you, sir. All right, any other comments from anyone?
I'd say I, I generally like the, the plan. And I think that they will work with the city and the fire department to alleviate some of the safety concerns. And I think the shape of the particular lot that we're talking about here kind of precludes a lot of creativity. You're not going to get any serpentine rose in it or anything like that. So I think that the only thing he would be doing would be spreading these out, have lower density and higher prices. So basically, I'm going to be for it.
I think where, where I'm at is I, I do struggle with the, the density. Living in this neighborhood as well, it, it's sort of, it, it, it's, I'm having a hard time imagining it fitting in well with the existing fabric. Part of that though may just be with the, the, how long that neighborhood has been there. As I'm trying to think about, I don't know if there would be a way to have it, you know, fit like a perfect puzzle piece. I just don't know if there is a world where that exists. Looking purely logically, it does seem that the developers have, have done a good job of addressing many of the, the issues that were raised. We're a little close with some, especially with looking at those, the traffic numbers and things, but they are still acceptable. And if they're, if they're below the standards, they're, you know, they're below the standards. If it comes to it where you have to have that density to keep the prices down, I, I, I just don't, like, I, I, I just struggle to, to, to see. Because I don't want it to be empty either though, and just to be, to be nothing.
Not what I'm into, yeah.
Yeah. I don't want it to be, to be nothing. I have a hard time imagining that these will be, these aren't starter homes. But it, maybe it opens up, people move out of starter homes into these and then people can get the starter homes. But I just don't know if there's a good, a, a perfect puzzle piece we're going to find to put in here. And especially if there are ways that you can keep, keep working between council and, and our board and, and the developers. Maybe we can get a best available option for the, for the community.
Any other comments?
I am not a fan. It is also my neighborhood. I will be fully transparent. We struggle getting out in the morning. We struggle getting in in the evening. I think it is too much in that space.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Any comments? Cash, anything?
So can I just ask for further clarifications or just so we're all on the same page? So this has been, Mr. Horn, I suppose I would ask, and I apologize if this is, I guess I, I just want to know, so council, where, where they are currently at with especially looking at the density, because it does seem like this is, is coming up a lot. In terms of fitting in with the spirit of the existing neighborhood, is that something that council has come to would say that they, is it fair to say that they, they agree with that?
What normally happens is when a developer comes into our city and they see, we'll put an RFP out for this, for this property, and people will bid it. And usually it's, and I come from the construction world. So when you bid public work, it's first and second place. And what is this first place, if they, if it's, if they're trying to bid it for a, a budget, then they win as long as they hit all the criteria. If they're off, then they, second place gets it. In this case, an RFP, just like we just put the RFP out for the senior center and then also for Roosevelt Ridge, they were awarded. So this is awarded to them. This property has been given to them. Tiffs have been negotiated and all these things. And, and they have been, they've given this, this, this detailed drawing, this preliminary drawing, this is not the final by a long shot. I mean, I really appreciate it when developers do give you things to look at. You know, the, what, what the houses are going to look like. And I'm sure they have 3D renderings of everything. So it kind of gives you the visual of what this could be. And then they, they negotiate with the city manager and their team, which would include Claire and the assistant city manager at times. So this is a deal that's been made. Now, it's up to him to say, you know what, I don't want to wait three years. Because that's some of the complaints that I've had from business leaders that come to me saying, I can't bring developers here because they just can't wait. And that's a choice. So to answer your question, the deal's been made. But now we're going through the, okay, this is, this is the deal that you have. But we have concerns because we have citizens who have been here for a while and we have new citizens. And we want to hear everybody. That's why we have six citizens that City Council appoints on this committee. Or commission, sorry. So hopefully that answers your question. So the deal's been made. So they are the awarded developer for this property. Now to say, go back and say, now, all right, can you do 40 units? Or can you do 30 houses? That's not in his business plan for this development. That's not for, that, that's not his project. That's not, that's his margins already been set up and everything else. All we're really discussing here is we're in the preliminary portion of this and we have concerns about safety. We can have concerns about density. We have concern about this. So we, that's why we have these conversations. But the, the deal's been made. So he is the developer for this property. And these have been approved to the point of, at a preliminary state. Meaning he has no authority to go to the building department with architecturals, with stamped drawings, and to start the process. That's why he has to go through the process. That's why I asked Claire to take us through the process. For those who don't know, or those who do know, it takes time. And he, and the clock's ticking on him because his budget is based off of a timeline. And as we've seen, materials, and I can attest to this, materials go up, they go down, then they go up, and then they might come down. And then his margin keeps getting to the point where he's like, going to a township by, I don't want that, by the way. Does that answer your question? Okay. Okay. Oh, and side point, I was like, doing history, the last development was the houses that were built right here in 1991. Yeah, well, I know that because I was married at the time, and we looked at those homes, and I just wasn't a fan, but when you ask, when was the last development that had multiple houses, it's the houses that are right here. So that's the last time we had a bit of land available, that, multiple houses, I'm sure houses have been built in that area, but those were all built at the same time, so.
Okay.
I think what it comes down to, what I would like to see, I don't want to waste your time, I want to respect the commitment that the city has already made to you, but I, I just cannot get over the traffic conflict thing. Is there a way that you could just take what's there, shuffle it around a little bit, and then make Schaefer a through street, or I'm not sure if that's a proper term, but you know, like, up here, oop, my bad, where the detention basin is and kind of, you know, bring it around ever so slightly? I don't know how feasible that is for you, but I feel that that's the most immediate way to remediate that.
So again, the awkward place I'm in, this is what was negotiated with council. So now, you know, I would come back with something different, so, you know, or look at something different. So in my opinion, I mean, I'm struggling because this was a negotiated concept, we went through multiple revisions on the house, this is this and that, so it's like, you know, I guess at this point, I'd rather go back to, you know, city council and say, guys, this is your plan, are we still good? Or are we not? I mean, because I'm getting different direction from different bodies, and this is really, I haven't been in this situation, and it's hard and it's confusing what to do, honestly.
I can understand that.
I'm going to go for it, chairman. I'm going to ask our body to consider approving it with the traffic study, with fire marshal approval, and eliminating 28 and 27 to remedy any safety concern.
Those are very good, very good suggestions.
We need to move it forward, just as Mr. Horn said, this is a preliminary, and we do need more housing. Remember, it comes back to planning, that's, you know, that's the main thing. We need to move this forward, in my opinion, and that's what I would propose to us.
So has a motion been made? Sorry, I still need to.
I want a discussion, I want to know what you think. I'm saying, we do it requiring a traffic study, requiring a fire marshal approval, and the elimination of the last two, knowing that we can get that big pumper in there should there be a fire.
I think that's, I think those are good. I probably will still vote against this personally, but I think that what you propose is very reasonable, I think that's very reasonable. So if you wanted to make a motion for approval based on what.
I will.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a very good.
Have I done it?
I restate it one more time for the record, and you'd be good to go, yeah. I'll second that.
I moved that we approve it with a traffic study to be performed, with the fire marshal approval, and with the elimination of units 28 and 27 that should cover our safety concerns.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, Mr. Fetter, we can call the roll.
Mr. Moore?
I just want to say this, it pains me, Mr. Cristo, Mr. Horn, I've already stated that. I truly believe that you are putting your very best work into this, but I, I think that if there was a few tweaks, I would be all in on this project, I really would, and I appreciate Mr. Ambergy's suggestion here, I think it's very reasonable, in good faith, I cannot vote for it, though, no.
Mr. Ambergy?
Me? I couldn't hear you.
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Cash?
Yes.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
No.
Mr. Mantel?
Yes.
Mr. Horn's got you next, okay, so there you go. Get ready. Get ready. Okay, we can do, move now to item B, this is a time limit extension from JA Development. Ms. Fetter, please introduce the case.
Yes, so there is a one-year extension request of the preliminary development plan approval to allow for a total of two years before final development plans must be submitted. The preliminary development plan was approved by Planning Commission on July 25th, 2024, and City Council on September 3rd of 2024. Per the Middletown Development Code, Plan Development District Review Time Limit, Part One, any planned development, final development plan shall be, I'm not going to read all this, this is a lot. However, I did ask the applicant to provide a reasoning as to why they're requesting an extension, and per the applicant, the extension is requested for Maple Ridge because the applicant views this project as a phase two of a larger townhome development along Town Boulevard, with Haven Wood Plan Development being phase one. Applicant would like to sell the majority of homes in Haven Wood, which may take several years, and proceed with the Maple Ridge homes. The one-year extension would allow enough time to execute that plan.
Any questions for Ms. Fetter?
I don't have any questions for that.
Okay, we ready for a motion?
Move that we accepted is proposed.
Okay, have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Ambergy?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Cash?
Yes.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Mantel?
Yes.
On to the second time limit extension request, oh, do you want?
That's okay, go ahead.
There is a one-year extension request of the final development plan approval to allow for a total of three years before development begins for the Atticus Plan Development. The final development plan was approved by Planning Commission on November 9th of 2022. Here is the time limit from the Middletown Development Code regarding Plan Development District Summittals, and per the, same, excuse me, same process was considered with this applicant asking why they're requesting the extension. The extension is requested for the Atticus because the outcome letter stating, Planning Commission's approval of the final development plan was not received until February 17th of 2023, about four months after approval, and the current economic constraints have prevented new construction nationwide, including a 30% increase in building costs. These challenges have required the applicant to reevaluate the project's feasibility to bring a quality project to the city of Middletown. The applicant states they are currently working with city staff on a proposal to bring feasibility to the project. And here is their written extension request from the applicant.
Any questions? No questions at all? Okay. Would someone like to make a motion for approval? I'll make a motion to.
Break the ice. Second.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Ambergy?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Cash?
Yes.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Ms. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Mantel?
Yes.
All right, and I do believe Mr. Horn had some new business to bring up.
Yep. New or old business, Mr. Horn?
This is only business.
Okay.
And I just need about five minutes. So it is, this year has flown by, and in December, we start reviewing applicants, and we have two applicants right now that are going to be renewing, I'm hoping, is Mr. Ambergy and Mr. Mantel. So I just want to briefly, because Mr. Mantel's new, and I don't know if, you know, I know everyone has lives and such, this is just volume two of our codified ordinances, so if you're really bored, there's another whole volume of this, if you ever want to read it. I can't do the digital version, I'm sorry, I'm, Mr. Mantel, if you can do that, that's awesome, but I'm an older guy, and I had them printed off.
I annotated all this.
So what I just briefly want to do, hold on here, and this is just some, just some gentle reminders, if you want to know where you guys are at, you're in chapter 12, 1226 of the codified ordinance, okay? And this planning commission was established by city council. We have six members, voting members, that are appointed by city council, and actually the city is also now going to start doing vetting because we want to believe that people fill out their application truthfully, but why not just do a little check, just in case? And then we have one member that's appointed by the Middletown School District, so that's all seven voting members. There's actually nine members in this whole group, non-voting member, non-voting member, and that's in, in chapter 1226. The main thing I want to discuss, and it's just so we don't have another situation like we had last month, and it is in, under quorums and decisions, section six and section B. The planners of our city at times, they really were thinking, especially when they did a city manager, city council versus a strong mayor and a vice mayor, but a lot of times they'll say, well, if you have five people here, then three votes work. Well, it actually says, Planning Commission shall act when at least four voting members concur. I'm not trying to, that's why I'm glad no one's here, okay? I'm just trying to say, we can't do that again, because then I had to act, and the city, acting city manager had to call Mr. Hansel there and just apologize, say, can you come back? And we made a mistake, and we all make mistakes, but just to know, so that also means, because you will have lives and people sometimes can't make it, this is awesome, we have all seven of you here tonight, but if there are four of you, and you vote 4-0, for, or against, that's still a quorum, but it's just, but it's clearly written in here, and if you do get a minute, I mean, it's only, I think, four pages, chapter 1226 of the codified ordinance is this description of the planning commission, and I also wanted to say, we appreciate at city council, this advisory board, and that's what these, the, I'm also on the airport board, and the chairman said that, and I thought that was the most, I always give Tom, give credit when someone says something that's very poignant, and he was talking to the other folks who were grousing about some concerns, and he's like, guys, we are an advisory board to city council, and if we didn't have these boards, here's what would happen. One, my $2.50 on the hour would probably get down to about 75 cents on the hour because I'd have to have longer meetings, or we'd have to have additional meetings, because if you didn't exist, then Claire and our council here would have to come to city council, we'd have to have all these public meetings, and we would have to make the decisions, so we appreciate that you volunteer your time for the low, low price of $0 and your time. And that's, and I do appreciate, and I do appreciate the fact now that when a builder comes here, they know, you're not going to vinyl up your new building once it's approved. You can put it, you can put it on the second floor, okay, I'm good, I didn't grouse too much or cringe when I saw the new drawings, maybe that's hardy board, I can hope, but at least the first floor, and we're, we're doing, we're doing good work here. So I just want to, that's all my new business was, is because we have a new member here, and I just want to encourage those who are renewing to please get your application in, because I think we review those at the last meeting in December, so we can start January off fresh and everyone's appointed, so that's my new business.
Any other new business, Claire? Anything else?
No, we didn't bring it up at the beginning, but the text amendment for the fence height, it did not get public notice in time, I sent it out where it was only up to like 25 days of published notice in the newspaper, so that will be on December's agenda instead of today's.
Did he send that to us?
Yep, about a week before.
A week before?
Maybe six days. We're getting better, though.
Good, thank you. Okay, that brings us to adjournment, all those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we are adjourned.